Good evening and welcome to the August 28th meeting of the City of Short Acres City Council. Tonight is a special meeting, which means that we need four council members to proceed. So Ms. Anderson, will you call the roll?
Mayor Jennings.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Ramos, excuse me. Alderman Greason.
President.
Alderman Bell.
President.
Alderman Hill.
President.
Alderman Mitchell.
President.
All right, you'll stand with me for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to each Texas, one state under God.
Okay.
The limit for this room is thirty people, so we have room, three people standing. We have plenty of seats next door. Come in here so we can, we won't max this limit out, please.
I'll be back here by myself.
No, there's people back there. And I'm sure there'll be more. Will we proceed? Troy, will you make sure they can see whoever's gonna be speaking?
Yes, sir.
Not currently. It can't flip, no, sorry, screen. Wait, let me move that just a little bit and see if that. Oh, it'll switch over, yeah. But I will take care of that from right here. Yeah, I still need just, just a little bit. About that.
Yes, sir.
Good, guys? Oh, good. Okay. I am three point O, public hearing and public comments. This is the opportunity for the public to address the council. Time is limited, a five minutes per speaker. Comments are to be directed to the city council. Dialogue with the audience is not permitted. Council members are prohibited by law from participating in the discussion or deliberation of items not specifically identified on agenda. However, if you are talking about something on the agenda, council member may question you or ask you a question or something like that. As long as we don't get off into stuff that's not on the agenda. Okay, and we are going to start with, start off with Mr. Ebar. Mr. Ebar is going to kick us off, and what you do is you state your name and your address. And then you tell us what you think.
Okay.
Ed, you want to move it back to where it was?
Perfect. Ed Ebar, one forty-five Shady Lane, Lon. Almost forgot, right? Anyway, reason here, gentlemen, is to talk about this election process that has gotten out of control. And first up, what I want to do is thank Mayor Pro Tim, Ms. Ramos, Alderman Mitchell. You guys had the backbone and have the citizens' interests in mind, and I thank you for that. Gentlemen, the rest of you who voted to go for this Mr. Gant guy. And please understand, I'm no longer an innocent. I am back to being a citizen that I am and was active beforehand. So this is Ed, the citizen, talking, not the coroner. I don't even care. But I do care when I have council members who fail to do the job that they've been appointed to do. Due diligence is part of that job, gentlemen. You just got up here, you did a resume check, and then the interview, that's all that occurred here. Did y'all bother even checking this gentleman's background? Did y'all?
Last time we did.
Good, so then you, you know that he got fired, right? He got fired for what? For covering up several items at City Hall, at Kema City Hall. Did you know that? And you did, and you're still getting put him on board here. You don't have a problem with that, do you? Okay, gentlemen, ladies, this is what you need to see. This is exactly why we elected people that we trust. But they chose to have a gentleman who sided with the police chief when he had fourteen complaints from other police officers because the police chief was being oppressing the officers and other things. Anyway, all these are supposed to be, the information I have here is on the news. We have copies, but they're not here yet. So that's incredible to learn, but thank you for being truthful. But you know where the money's going. And the other thing that I would expect you to do is do a wage survey, okay? A wage survey is, there are several methods to wage survey. One of the things is, I did this, and I went to Texas demographics dot com, so I got all the cities that were within our population number based on the 2020 numbers, and if we're at eight hundred and thirty-five in the rankings there, I have nine above and I think ten below. And again, I have copies of this, and I want y'all to look at that when I get here. So the highest salary was in Banks, Texas, at ninety-five thousand, no bonuses, no allowances. The next one was in the number one spot in this twenty twenty-one was ninety-one thousand, no bonuses. And then in the middle of all that is a manager's position for a hundred and twenty-six plus fifteen thousand plus four hundred, four thousand eight hundred dollars, and approximately twelve thousand. I don't know what the insurance is, but we're just speculating that it's a thousand dollars a month. Let's just give it plus or minus a few thousand, okay? So that total is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And, and that is what y'all are preparing to pay when you have someone here as a, as a city manager that started with no experience. And as I understand it now, he wants to, he would like to have his job back. He's gone through some time off, and he's doing very well. And I think we need to consider that instead of spending this money so foolishly. And I'm ashamed and embarrassed that we have elected people without having vetted you guys well enough. I know Wes didn't get vetted, he got appointed. But this is embarrassing, and I hope, and you have an obligation tonight and an opportunity to tell your constituents here why you chose to do that. And I had thought very highly of you, especially Mr. Hill. And I'm, I'm just taken back by this, that you would be assuming that this city can afford a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Okay, we have some money, but that doesn't mean you get to go buy a Cadillac. That means we need to buy a car that's gonna be economical and worthwhile for some time, plain and simple. And that's what needs to happen here. This job, which Troy's doing it for a hundred and nine, a hundred and eleven thousand a year, and you want to bump it up to this amount of money? I just am taken back, and I'm sure everybody else here is taken back by that. For a minute, one minute. Anyhow, we have the copies here, so if you want to read that for yourself, this is not BS from me. This is throughout, this is documented, and you heard firsthand here that they don't care that they're going to invite probable problems and lawsuits into this city. This guy doesn't have, he's called a pathological liar. It's proven that he took up for his police chief instead of taking care of the police officers. And we don't need that for our officers here. Officers don't need to have this. I'm also afraid that what he's going to do is come in here and clear the slate out and bring in his cronies, okay? Nothing's gonna prevent him from doing that. So we will have some stuff passed out to you, and I thank you for your time, and I cannot wait to hear what you have to say this afternoon about your, your decisions. I'd be glad to hear that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ebar. The back throw. Norma.
I'm good.
I'd like them to speak.
Same.
Tasha? No? Okay, next, next. Next, Tasha?
All right.
Good, okay.
Brad Aaron, thirty-four eleven Bayou Forest. I was here not too many council meeting minutes, council meetings previously when we were discussing hiring a new person to take Troy's place. And it was explained by the mayor that this was gonna take a lengthy process, that it was not gonna be anything that was done hastily. And here we have, we pushed it forward and done it faster than what originally had, had planned in the meeting that I went to, and I just am concerned about the process and wondering how many other applicants or interviewees that you had for this position?
We had, we, council reviewed twenty-three, twenty-four counties. And, and the process itself, from the meeting you went to until today, has taken a little bit over four months. So it's, it's been very thorough. Council has reviewed every single application that we, we got before August the twelfth, or the eleventh.
Yeah, right, that answers my question.
All right, let's see. Next door, next.
Yeah, Martin Cox, eleven three three zero three Westview Street. Just a quick little bit about himself. In the last few weeks, I've become an American citizen, care very much about America. I've worked in a lot of countries in the world, and of this is the best country to live in. However, when I see things going on, like the offers being made to people that have no care whatsoever about this city, I'm a bit concerned about it. And I believe it was advertised within a certain price bracket, and then all of a sudden boom, out of nowhere comes a contract with a lot more money than what we were supposed to be giving, offering. Why did that happen? I don't know. I mean, can anybody say why that happened?
Sure, we had to, to raise the salary to get a qualified person in, in this particular environment. I did hear somebody say that, I believe it was Ed saying that to hire Mr. Harrison. And Mr. Harrison would also be in that same range.
Okay, all right, okay, well, anyway. That's one thing that, but was it discussed between everybody, or did y'all know about that one is gonna go up? After, after everybody else was told here that it was gonna be within the same wage bracket?
By the council.
Okay, all right. Seems to me like you've been bullied into things, is what I see.
I couldn't hear you.
What?
I couldn't hear you.
I think, from what I see, the city council here are being bullied. You guys are the power here. He's not. You don't take any notice from what he says. He has no power. You have. And you're here to represent us, not him. And you need to get out there and listen to the people, see what the people want. You were all told not to speak about this to the residents. Yeah, well, that's what we, what we told about, told that nobody can speak about it. Why?
I, I didn't hear you again.
Your council was told not to speak about this. Keep your mouth shut.
Council was told that they couldn't talk about an executive session because that's against the law.
All right, anyway. Okay, so then we come, come around and then find out that all of a sudden there's been a nine thousand dollar payment being made to somebody paying, paying the city police station. That came out, what was that, in the budget? Was it in the budget?
The police station was deteriorating. We had to repair termite damage.
Okay, so you got, so you got quotes in?
No, no, we, we use a trusted supplier, which is the way the city runs.
Okay, well, when you're saying that spending nine thousand dollars, I think the city would like to see you get, to get a hold of it.
Well, that's just not the way we work, but maybe you need to change.
Okay. So. About it, but the thing about this is the city manager, the, the decision should have been made. I don't, I don't see why it takes you four months to do it. You, you gotta resume, it looks very nice, never even been city manager before. And you've got a lot of background, bad background, but you're still chosen. Don't understand it. And the other, one other thing, when, when the elections were coming up, we saw you and you every day around asking questions, putting my sign up in here, putting my sign up in here, they have to bang, you disappear. You know, you, you should be, your job is to go out there and ask the residents what they, where their opinion is, what they want. And it's for you to sort it out in the council with the mayor or whatever, and do your job. I don't see that. Why do you have a town hall? Why do you ask the residents what they think about what's gonna be happening in the city? Anybody thought about doing that? I don't see it, never heard of it.
Every, every month, and we do exactly what you're doing here, and you're telling council exactly what you need, and that's the way residents participate.
Yeah, but why can't these guys go out and ask the residents?
Wait, I would suspect that they do. Perhaps they haven't talked to you.
But I don't think I've seen it, you do either since the election day.
Posted my contact information, invited anybody that wanted to talk about anything.
Up to now, I didn't, I couldn't remember what you look like. You're not out there with the people. I think a good council member, but will be out there with, in the city, talking to people. Using your own go to go and talk to them. Not to sit here. Anyway, thank you, everybody. I'm done.
Um, let's see, where were we? Mr. Dodd, Dave, Mary?
My name's Mary Beckford. I live at two oh two Fairfield. And what I would like to say is that I know that this is a really difficult decision. And I think that this, because of what happened at the last one, it gives an opportunity to reevaluate, reassess your vote, and to consider the other members. To think if there's this much divisiveness because of hiring this particular person, maybe we could just take a step back and rethink it. So. Because this bothers me that there's this much divisiveness in the city over this issue. Because this person, whoever you hire, is going to have to work with everybody. And so for that reason, I'd like y'all to just take a step back and rethink it.
Thank you, Mary.
I'd like to say something. Sorry, I know you already skipped me, so.
Tasha?
Yes. Hi, I'm Tasha Stubbs. I live right there across the police station, five thirty-eight Short Acres.
What's the address?
Five thirty-eight Short Acres Boulevard. I don't, I'm not really knowledgeable. I don't know a lot what's going on. I know a little bit from online, but I can't say. Watching them paint across the street, like I watched a paint like four years ago. So I want to know why somebody didn't go back and evaluate when's the last time we painted, when's the last time we did something? And then also, I run a business, and in that business, I always get three quotes. That's something you should do. If you get, if you're gonna spend nine grand on painting the police station, like I just feel like it was a really poor choice, and I do second what she was saying about her, about all of us having to work with this person. I haven't physically met him, but I can say that me and my kids and my family, we come to all these events. If he's here, it's gonna make it really uncomfortable for other people, especially myself. If, if he's continuing to abuse the funds that are for our city and for our people, not just for this guy and whatever y'all choose to do freely, I think that it needs to be evaluated. It's a red flag that there is hostility and concern with what he's doing in our community, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Tash. Okay, um, yes.
You have the last for thirty-four fifteen East Body Drive.
Excuse me, ma'am. Go ahead.
All right, so I'm gonna start off with, back when I was coming before I got sick and spent some time in the hospital and had some health issues. We were discussing the trash issue around election day. We had Alderman that said he was gonna get us a poll done. Ain't seen the poll, y'all. So what are we doing? We ain't doing our jobs. Uh, on a, you know, on a note, we got a email sent out about trash running late, but they'd be there. Hey, that worked out great. Even went and commented on the post, you know? People talked about getting an email or getting notified that the trash was gonna be picked up, but be late. You know, everyone says, well, why are you worried about the trash? You know, it, it's, well, when you get left out overnight, dogs knock it over, wind knocks it over, you pick it up. Yeah, I pick it up out of the bayou. Gets irritating. So, you know, if I know they're coming, I'll leave it out. If I don't know they're coming, pull it back in. So that's happened. Uh, the other one is, I, I am glad we have Laporte EMS, y'all. I got to use them. They were at my house that quick. From the time my wife called nine one one to the time they showed up at my door was four and a half minutes. So. Y'all were doing that. Now, me, myself, I was a maintenance manager. I would have never thought about getting any work done without three quotes. Three quotes, y'all. I mean, your homes, your homes, would you, would you do that? Would you just go spend nine thousand dollars without getting other quotes? I mean, I'm asking, you up here would do that? Spend that kind of money without getting more than one quote? Well, then.
I have a trusted list of suppliers I've used for years.
Well, and you know what? That's fine.
My husband's a general contractor.
I've had, I've had lots of dealings with people that I trusted, and then they come back in and rip me off. You know, I mean, that happens, so that's why you get three quotes every time you do anything.
Ask, I answer?
Well, I'm, I'm, and then this part about hiring someone that's got problems? You know, I've read it on, I've read the reports. It's, it's out there. So, I mean, that's just, I mean, we're asking for trouble. And then when we were here, when I, when I went for Chuck and stood up there, everybody talked about how bad we were doing the money, and we're giving out more money? I mean, guys, y'all are responsible for our budget up here, and you want to talk about, oh, we need this, 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 and this. But then you don't care, it don't seem that, how y'all spend the money. It's not my money. I'll spend it. You know, everybody likes spending other people's money. It's easy. But think about it, it's your money. It's everyone of our money.
Thank you, Kevin.
Absolutely.
Bro, Connie.
Connie Ramirez, where do I live? Let's go three Short Acres, and we also own a property at thirty-five oh six Mermar. I'd like to find out, and I know it's not this meeting, but bring it to council so that possibly it could be on a meeting, when we're gonna start citing the individual at this house over here that hasn't mowed their lawn in, I don't know, a year? I understand it's been in probate. What's happening with that? I guarantee if I lived in the city of Laporte, I'd have been cited time after time after time for not taking care of that lawn to let it look like that. And other property on this, you know, I was here at the meeting when they brought up my property. We've gone over, we've done what we need to, and we're potentially will be building on that. So I think that other things in this city need to be taken care of. Also, I'd like to find out what we're doing about, Mr. Barry Plant did a very good presentation. I have shared it with individuals that weren't here at this meeting that live in the city, and I want to know what we're doing about the flood. Requiring the whole city to be out of VE velocity. When we build on our property, yes, we're one of those six houses that will be a VE. Don't, don't bother me at all because that's what needs to be done. But at the current house I live, I can't put an auxiliary building in the back because it's gotta be at VE zone, and that's ridiculous. So I'd like to find out what you guys are doing about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Okay, Kelly.
How you doing? I'm Ricky. You have to go in the other room.
Oh, other room?
Yeah. All right, I live at three four one four old highway one forty-six. See some familiar faces. I see people I don't know. I'm former Mayor Pro Tim of the city. We negotiated a contract with Troy to take over as city manager and police chief. Myself, Mayor Jennings, Troy, and a little bit with Jerome McCown, who's a former Mayor Pro Tim. We negotiated that it would be temporary. This was not gonna be a permanent. We're in this situation now because it was a permanent fix. Troy gave his resignation on April ninth. Due to, and I'm just gonna say it, him bullying, who was bullied into the position. He was starting to be fired if he did not take the position. That needs to be put out there. He was told, take it, or I'll find somebody else to work. Exact words. In that time, he's done a lot. He does not spend money without consciously thinking that it's his own. This is what we need. Quit. Speculation on my part, I'm pulling P I Rs, I'm gonna be honest. I've got legal fees. Right around the time he quit, there's some legal fees involved with our former city administrator. And I'm gonna find out more about it, because I'm asking for emails now. I think there's some shady stuff going on. It's not above board. As far as this contract goes, not approved by council. It's not legal. Never approved. Three-month contract, not allowed by our ordinances. We have that issue before. Let's talk about, this guy will be the only person that gets insurance. We've got guys that have worked here for years as police officers. They do not get the same privilege. If this guy leaves, he's fired, if it's non-renewal on his contract, thirty-two thousand dollars. It's ridiculous. I mean, we're talking, we've already about eight grand in on legal fees dealing with this contract because of incompetence. Candidates were not treated equally. One person was called out, the rest of them weren't. It's not fair. If you're gonna do it, it's gotta be above board all the way across. Did you list everybody or you don't? Tried reaching out to council. They are not allowed to talk to us about it under threat of lawsuit. I'm curious as to why. It's not fair. It's not right. It's not how we've done this before. I've been, I've been involved with negotiating with city manager. It's not right. It's not above board. A lot of back office stuff out of public view. We need to be above board. We're better than that. I grew up here, not going anywhere. And to be honest, he's better than you step down. He, he's done some good for the city. I agree with that. But we're to the point now that it's just ridiculous, appointing himself city manager. Assuming control when he didn't have legal right to. Spending money. We're about three hundred thousand dollars in, I'm sure. Legal fees, everything. We deserve better than this. There's, there's other alternatives. Getting rid of Troy's not one of them. We're gonna keep him, one way or the other. He gets voted out, because I know what's gonna happen. Get a signed city manager, you're already talking about doing budget cuts and making budget lineups. I promise you, I promise you, we will correct that if he's gone. Promise you, it'll happen. Some of y'all don't remember who got you elected. I do. Again, I've been here a long time. We deserve better. We need better. There's some alternatives. I got ideas. I'll talk to council when they're allowed to talk about it. But I can also tell you, the guy that's bringing in, he's shady. He's been investigated. No background check done. If we started doing a background check after he signed a contract, that's the first I've ever heard of doing something that dumb. It really is. It's incompetent. You need to know what we have before we do it. But I said incompetence, so I'll say it again. I'll continue to say it. That being said, I hope you vote your mind, vote your conscience. I know plenty of people here, very rarely. I know a lot of y'all have been here and not seen it this pack. I was here when Kim Sanford was here, and we'd have a pact all the time. We're better than that, and we're almost back to where we were because of the tyranny that we're dealing with in here. In the single, strong-fisted way that we, we manage business here with bullying and all that, and I said bully. And you can laugh all you want. You can laugh all you want. The fact is, we'll, we'll take council back and we'll do what we need to do. Troy, you wanna, there's four or five.
All right, good evening, y'all. Nathan Bennett, thirty-four twenty-two Bayou Forest Drive. Wanted to kind of echo some of Ricky's comments, especially around the money. Money's important to me. I know we're a small city. We don't bring in a lot of money. So we need to watch everything consciously. Taking a look at the data that was presented by Ed earlier. It's hard to believe that a city our size is wanting to pay thirty thousand dollars over when we've had candidates that wanted to take within the appropriate median range of the salary. The extra spending on the other things I would say would make up in the salary, but it doesn't justify the overpriced bonus, insurance, car stipend, whatever the case may be. When we're already looking at trying to pay Troy or keep Troy, and we haven't mentioned salary there, but now we want to add a burden of almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to a budget. It's already strained enough. We've finally gotten in the green from what I am. It's already strained enough. We've finally gotten in the green from what I understand within the last few years. I think we should stay there in this. Frustrated spending just seems irresponsible when council needs to look out for what's best for the city. I, I don't understand why I can't justify it from what I hear. This guy has no experience. Just gonna repeat the comments up here. You know, when you get into a role, you should be paid for your experience. And this guy has no experience. I don't see why he should be the highest person on this proposed. I think this should be renegotiated, reconfigured. I think we've had better candidates, um, that have offered to, uh, support the city budget and align with, uh, what they think is fair. And I think that should be reconsidered. I hope council votes right. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Mike Wheeler. I live at three fifteen Shore Acres Boulevard. I've sat where you guys are at and, uh, we haven't had a packed house like this since the Kim Sanford case. So obviously there's a hot button here that people are not happy with the decisions that y'all have made, especially with the investigations, uh, into Mr. Gant's past uh, that I don't think was ever brought to light. Y'all chose him to be the next city manager. If it was, then shame on you. Because we don't need bringing that kind of stuff into our city. We have had a pretty calm run about the last seven, eight years. We don't need the drama, really. Do your job.
Hey, our good afternoon, good evening. My name is Tammy. I live at one zero zero six Shore Acres Boulevard. The city of Shore Acres recently posted a job that, um, with job opening, but it appears that the candidates were not given an apples to apples comparison of the position. That raises serious concerns about transparency, fairness in hiring. Job posting requirements, transparency, accuracy, equal opportunity. And transparency with a clear description, qualifications. Job postings must reflect the actual skills, education, experience required. If someone is hired under hidden or undisclosed criteria, it may be challenged as an improper hiring. Equal opportunity requires that the postings are not misleading or discriminatory. If requirements are not disclosed upfront, but later applied, applicants could argue they were denied a fair chance. In my eyes, this is the way it was. I can only compare it with one person that we had here. The pay that was listed for the job description on glass door, unless there was another one, sixty thousand to ninety five thousand per year. What happened to that? What happened to this pay rate, dental insurance, health insurance, pay time off? Nowhere does it say, I'll give you, if we let you go, a thirty two thousand, thirty one thousand payout. Where is that? Who made that decision? Who made the decision to change what was posted because it was illegal and it's against all rules and laws? And we can shake our head. We can say whatever. I'm disappointed. I will tell you, I will give kudos to Chuck and to Felicia for standing their ground and saying no, because that was the first time I've ever seen a city council go against what the mayor asked for. I don't understand. I don't understand why. I don't understand why it couldn't have been one more. Because they took upon themselves to say no. No. State government laws many requirement competitive transparent hiring for city positions. City, uh, discrimination claims hidden selectively. Applied requirements may include favor certain candidates triggered, triggering EEOC of state level action. Was that done? Was this guy already hired before he came in? Did you lead the other candidates on? I'd like to know who the third candidate was. When you had your backdoor meetings, your back closed doors meetings, which you always, you don't even know. Higher practices must be transparent, fair, and lawful. If Shore Acres does not follow the proper procedure, it puts the city at risk, legal challenges, wasted taxpayers' dollars, and loss of public trust. Anybody else trust? If you don't take your time out and you don't come back and forth and fight the system and there's only two bulldogs in this city or three bulldogs in this city, then that's the way we're gonna be. So if you want to stand. Residents deserve clarity and accountability in how the city jobs are feels. What else is, is it that we're not knowing about? What else has changed? I do hiring for a living, three hundred and something employees out in the field. You do not apply that you're gonna hire for something and then you bring it for something else. You know, just because he looked like he was good. Did you ask Ed or any other candidates, do they have any kind of police experience? No. They focused on what the chatter was in the field, out in the community. I don't understand why we can't go up. When the mayor came out and said, I bought radios for seventy five thousand before saying anything, I bought, I paid for a water tower that hadn't even been repaired for the past five years that we already got state funds from. And guess what? He approved it. And he also said, I will take it out of my check if the city council doesn't do it. You know what each one of them said? I approve. I approve. I approve. They didn't even fight it. Didn't even fight it. You're supposed to protect us. And I had in hopes with the new group that came in that they would stand up for what's right. The mayor was sick. He quit on the city. Troy even quit on the city. Something happened. And what? And I aim to find out. Troy did a good job for this city. The mayor's done a good job for this city. Right now, there's not good decisions being made. I'm not done. And Ed's not done either. I told you, he was better in than out. When I mean out, he's gonna look out for the best interest of the news to be said.
Well, that's all. That's it?
Yes, sir.
There's a comment right here.
Nevermind. Hey, I'm gonna ask again. Anybody? We're gonna, we're gonna let everybody. You wanna ask one more time back there?
Yes.
You know what?
That's it, Mary.
Yeah.
Got one more in here.
One more.
I'm Normie, one, four, five, shady lawn. First, my husband spoke for most of what our family is feeling right now. And, um, as a citizen and a resident here, I don't want to have to pay more taxes. Okay? I don't, I don't want this city to go downhill. It's a great city. That's why we moved here. I'm gonna get emotional because I don't like, I don't like speaking in front of people, but I'd be able to live here for a while. But the way things are going, the way money is spent, that's not gonna be the case. Grandkids love coming here, living here. My grandkids and son love coming over here. We enjoy this place. It makes it a family, vacation, looking, feeling atmosphere. And we enjoy that. And that's how we want it to stay. And I think those are these families here, the same thing. I do have to say, the, the last meeting that occurred, I was, I was so upset on how monies were spent. Those are our tax dollars. Those are ours and yours. Most of you live here. Okay? And here, the mayor says, well, I already paid for it. They need to vote for it. It's out of my pocket. That's not how it goes. That is not how policies go. And if it does, and it shouldn't, you don't have the right to spend money that your council member have not voted on. Yes, we need it. I'm not saying we don't need it. Those are the things we do need. But there's a way of doing it. And if you come into meetings saying, well, I already spent it, I hope they vote on it. How can we trust you? What else are you gonna spend money on? We can't vote on. It's gonna happen.
He wants to be good.
The park is a mess. My grandkid can't even, can't walk around there. You're spending ninety thousand on a building to paint? I'll come paint it for you. That park needs to be fixed. Somebody's gonna get hurt. The grass needs to be cut.
Bar hydrant, cover.
There's a bunch of stuff that needs to be done around here. This building was just renovated and painted. Why did y'all paint this one or spend the money here? Okay, it's a waste of our money. And I want to retire soon. But the way the shit's going here, I'm not gonna be able to.
One last call.
Yep. All right. Roland Ramirez, live in eleven oh three, Shore Acres Boulevard. Uh, well, uh, we kind of, two more houses and a property on Marymore. Pay a lot of taxes to this, and, uh, enjoy living here. My question, I'm just trying to grasp what's going on here. The city manager, does he hold a badge? Is he a police officer? Does he have a police background?
Mr. Gant?
Yeah, I guess. I don't listen.
Yeah, yeah. So he was a police chief.
I'm just asking this question because I'm just listening to everyone. Is the agenda to get him on and then give him a dual role as police chief and city manager? Is that intent of this, why you're paying him so much?
Well, yeah, yeah. It's a, uh, the, the way Troy was paid for, for about eight years and, and the, uh, when, when we started this process, we thought it would be a, a part-time police chief and a full-time city manager. Um, when, uh, it changed and, and there was an, an audit coming up, I guess, and it has to be basically a full-time police chief. Um, I think that's when the council members saw that we did have an applicant that was qualified to do both. I don't think we thought that we would have any like that. And so I think that when, when council saw that, they, they said, you know, why don't we continue that model? Um, so that's all I can tell you, Roland.
May I, mayor, may I speak again?
Uh, if I let you, Mary, then everybody has to, and I can't, can't show favor to them.
Didn't even use this. I didn't use my whole body.
I know. It's what I'm going to do. Okay, go ahead. There's one more.
I haven't lived here for very long, like some of you, but I love it.
Nate, name it.
Deborah Mitchell, one, five, three, Fayetteville. I love it here. And with all of this, I feel like it's tainting my image of coming home and enjoying the neighborhood because of some shady stuff. And I'm just not real sure that everything's coming out like it needs to be. I have to say, council, please vote after hearing everyone's comments.
Thank you.
You're so tired.
Okay.
Yes, use my time. Use the rest of her time. Mary's using my time. Go for it.
Mary, I, I can't. I have to go everybody again. I'm sorry.
Not everybody wants to talk.
Nobody else wants to talk.
Thank, thank you, though.
Disappointed.
Okay. Mr. Harrison?
It's only the rules for us. Please, the rules for us.
The mayor's me.
Okay. Moving on, item four point one. Discussion and possible action canceling the August twelfth, twenty twenty five agreement for professional services and employment as city manager and replacing same with a new agreement for professional services and city manager, city employment and city manager with Walter Lee Gant the third. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to speak on all the issues.
First, we have to have a motion and a second.
Motion to discuss.
Yeah. Second. Uh, Paul. Okay, so I have a motion from this, Mr. Hill, and I have a second from Mr. Grease.
Volunteering to this unpaid position, as I live here, I've lived here since two thousand seven. Through Hurricane Ike and everything else that everybody else has. And I wanted to do what I thought was best for the city and for my family that lives here too. So one of the first things that came up immediately was needing to get the new city manager. So let me just walk through with my understanding of that process and give you some background. Well, I've learned the way I did. It's, uh, did it in, uh, what I thought was the best interest of, you know, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But I'll take, uh, I'll take that and, uh, I'm just gonna have to say, and don't appreciate the person. That person.
Okay.
Let that be. We can talk later. You like, okay. Uh, so council took in and reviewed twenty three plus resumes and applications for the job. Those applications, uh, resumes had all of their experience and background, at least that they wanted to tell us. That's what we had to go. So council, uh, each of us picked what we thought were the best candidates out of all of that. We put our heads together in executive sessions and came up with a list of four that we thought warranted uh, an interview and, and looking at closer. After we did the interviews, uh, mayor told us that Mr. Harrison had changed his mind and wanted his job back with a raise of fifteen percent, a vehicle allowance of fifteen hundred dollars a month, and with conditions that would make it easy for him to resign. I believe previous contracts, as I understand it, he had a ninety day notice to resign. Uh, Mr. Harrison wanted thirty days in his contract. So at that point, uh, the mayor, we had narrowed it down to Mr. Ibarra, to Mr. Gant, who we had interviewed, and to Mr. Harrison. Those are three options. And the mayor then made up, uh, draft contracts for each of those people. For us, all the councils are a view. We did. So part of my review of that, talking about the money that everybody's, and I'm concerned about, okay? There were four things I looked at. First of all, Mr. Harrison, uh, had informed mayor and council that, uh, he had to be paid thirty two hours by state law to pass, um, and, uh, uh, an audit that was about to happen. And I'm not sure, I know everything about that audit. So, uh, he wanted, uh, so he, he was gonna, we were gonna have to pay him at his previous hourly rate. He was gonna come out to a total with that, uh, vehicle allowance of about a hundred and one thousand a year. As a part-time chief. Okay, uh, Mr. Harrison asked for his job back as city manager and partner. Okay? That total was gonna be a hundred and thirty eight thousand, five hundred and fifty six. And when we, uh, Mr. Gant, they've seen his offer, but they've not seen anyone else's, I guess. Uh, his came out to a total of a hundred and thirty one thousand, so about seven thousand less than what Mr. Harrison was asking for. Mr. Ibarra wanted, uh, seventy five thousand in salary, uh, but to give the job to Mr. Ibarra, we would then be required, we would have to give, uh, the part-time police chief job to Mr. Harrison at a hundred and one thousand. So for a fair comparison, I felt like I had to add those two together compared to the others. That made the choice for Mr. Ibarra the highest out of all that we were able to consider. Uh, so that being said, um, our decision factors were based on the fall. Reviewing all the resumes and qualifications, I feel like Mr. Gant is the most qualified for city manager. He has a lot more experience than that. He has a lot of experience in writing, uh, managing events when we'll beat them in the future, which we do uh, based on more storms hitting. He was the best price. Well, I put the numbers to you. Okay? The last million expenditures, I was not happy with those, just like most of you were not. But when I looked into that, it seemed to me that that was a mismanagement by the city manager for those needs. Why couldn't, if, I don't think it was a secret that we were gonna get audited. So why didn't we address that way earlier? Okay, at the point it was brought to us, yes, we had. Okay, at the point it was brought to us, yes, we approved it. You want to fail the police audit, we didn't, so we all voted to to approve that money, okay? Another factor in my decision is, I don't have, I mean, I like Mr. Harrison, think he's done a lot of good for the city, but I don't have confidence personally that he intends to stay. I did, we, we all were told that there were issues with Mr. Gant and Kima, but when I looked into it, the best I knew how, I didn't see anything that was any worse than what happened right here when Kim Sant was in here. When I was, I was here during that time, I lived here. Mr. Gant's references were checked, we didn't find anybody who wasn't, wouldn't be happy to have him back or have him. His background check was done before he was made an offer of any kind, okay? Matter of fact, where he's working currently, they offered him more money to stay than to come here and take this job. He elected to do it because it's a lot less time and stress on him, a lot less responsibility, because it is a smaller city than, uh, Missouri City where he was working, okay? He wanted more time with his family, he lives in Cedar. So with all of that considered, I voted for him because he does have the capability, the police chief background and the certifications to do both jobs, and I felt like that was the best value for the city. So I'm selling that, I will say that by email, the contact information's on the city website, if anybody wants to talk to me about anything, that or anything else, I'm always there. Oh, I, I have a lot of things I do other than do this for free. So my wife and I travel a lot, we entertain our grandkids a lot. But I will, you know, so I'm not out there holding the streets to find out what the public wants, but I want everybody to know that I'm available, willing to listen, and, uh, I think that's all I can say for the rest of the time I'm gonna do, Johnny, come on.
Thank you. Anybody else, counsel?
Yes, I had voted also to, uh, bring Mr. Gant in based on what we looked on his resume and what we thought he could do for the city. Troy had taken it for a good long while, Troy did an excellent job, but he burned out. We knew that when we had Troy do both of them. And we found that we can't, we can't hire, we've got to hire a city manager that can stay on top of the items that need to be done. It's just like you notice, a lot of times we would have to go look and see some of these lots that were covered in grass and try to get ahold of the people that, so we can get them to cut the grass or else we're gonna be stuck with it. Things like that that needed to be done, that Mr. Harrison couldn't get to, because you and I both know that we have one of the safest cities in the county. And why do we have the safest city? Man right there, Troy Harrison, yeah, but we have got to keep him as chief of police. He can, at times, just like when we, this guy that we're gonna take a chance on. We have, it's written in our procedures and everything, that that we have any new hire or any employee in the city, that we have their own probation for six months. So we have six months to see if this guy is gonna be able to.
What about the Golden Parish?
I'm sorry, there's no dialogue with the audience.
That shouldn't take effect until he's hired permanently after six months. Now, if this doesn't apply to him, it's not in his contract, and it should be added into his contract so that we know that we have six months to see if this guy is gonna do what we think he's gonna do. Now, when we looked at his, what his background was, and a lot of it showed up as political. Political noise. Now, if somebody has stuff that, yes.
Political noise?
No.
They look at me like they wanted to ask a question. Listen, there's no dialogue with the audience, guys.
Why can't we talk, Mary?
That's, that's what the public comments were about.
When you gotta be confronted on some of this stuff, they look at me. Mayor, you don't follow the rules.
These are the rules.
I'm talking about you don't follow the rules in your office.
Let me finish. Thank you, sorry. What I wanted to say was, I was not going, I was not prepared to saddle Mr. Harrison again with something that we were probably burning out. I would rather have him stay as chief of police. And keep, keep us safe here in this community. Now, at some point in time, you know as well as I do. We had a hard decision going to, uh, emergency services from what we had. What we had was a bus ride. What we now have is we have an emergency vehicle that has somebody in it that can take care of us when they get there. That was a decision we had to make, we knew it was gonna cost some more money this time. So we have to be prepared for that, I don't want to pay more taxes than anybody else. So it's one of those things where, uh, your insurance go up this year? I did. Did your car insurance go up? I did. Did your flood insurance go up? Mine did. We can't stop those things from going up. So we have to, we have to have a plan, and the plan was to see if we could bring in somebody to take care of the things that Troy couldn't get to. We had planned next year to buy the radios. Well, it just so happened that the audit required that we have the radios that we needed. They were gonna be added to the budget next year. So we had to bring that back in so that we could get the audit done. And there's some things like the, doing some of the panels in our water treaty and our lift stations that needed to be done. And you know yourself, we've had to expend emergency funds quite a bit on water leaks. For that, we've had to repair sewer systems, things like that. All of those cost money, and we've had to try to maintain an emergency fund to take care of that stuff. So I'm looking at, the contract that we currently have is not sufficient with bringing in Mr. Gant. If we, and I'll be more than happy to look over anything that, uh, somebody can give me about his background before we even think about getting him a contract, yeah. Right now, alright.
Okay.
Good question, because I think I'm confused about something.
No.
Well, I will get, I will get to you in one moment. Let's let, let's let Mr. Grease finish.
You got anything, Paul?
As you know, our other big problem is flood control. And we try to look at those and see if we can get the ditches cut. For the channels that have to flow the water out, is what we try to look at most. We've tried to get flood control in here several times, they promised, they promised, they promised. This last time I went to the flood control meeting asking where my money went. Because they had promised us money to get things done around here. And they, as you know, COVID started, they, it went off somewhere, we don't know where the money was. But they're supposed to come see us. Question is, when? That's all I've got, mayor.
Okay, I'm gonna clear up some confusion, yes, ma'am.
Well, it's understood, but I thought we were saying, if we hired the other folks, we would also have to add in a chief of police, so the salaries would be more than Mr. Gant. But then I thought Mr. Harrison said we would keep Mr. Harrison as chief, even though we were hiring Mr. Gant. So.
What you are hearing is negotiations with these guys, because the, uh, the contract, the contract, uh, allows Mr. Gant to be the department head of the police. Yes.
Because if we add those two together, now they're much higher than the other two are.
Correct, that's certain, that's correct. So this was the first time that, that Mr. Greason has brought this up. Keep going. Who's next?
I've been here thirty-five years, and I've seen a lot of mayors and gone to a lot of council people, and they all have problems of their own. So far, they've all worked out. Now, Mr. Gant, we interviewed, as a group, we interviewed Mr. Grant in the back room. We took a notebook, we, everybody made questions they wanted to ask him, anything they wanted to ask him. You know, could've stayed in the room. Mainly. And, uh, I was really impressed with the guy, the guy was knowledgeable, he was educated. We liked him because he had a record for bringing in grant money from companies and governments, if we could really use right now. And I even made a statement to the group, I said, well, I guess that's the last interview we're gonna have to have. But we found a man. And, uh, like I say, I agree with what these two gentlemen said, and I voted with them on August eleventh, when we took our last vote. And my vote hadn't changed. So I have, mayor.
I guess, I'll go next, I voted no, I did research on him before I even did the interview, and no, I did not interview him because I did not feel like he was a good candidate. Um, he did not have the office manager skills that I was looking for, his resume to me was more of a police chief themed background, when we needed somebody who was more, you know, office manager type of role. I honestly thought we were only hiring the city manager, not knowing that he was going to be eventually taking over the police chief department, which I know for a fact, reaching out to Pasadena and Hema. Uh, he does bring his own in over time, and we will lose the support of the people to our police department, because we're not gonna know who's gonna be answering that call. We have a really good team right now, and that is something that I want to fight for, and I am just really confident that Gant is not the option that the city needs, it's more trouble than it's worth, and that is why I voted no.
May I ask for you? Um, I think we have another council member, but yes.
Go ahead, Troy. Okay.
Felicia, if you think you were surprised that they were looking for a police chief, imagine my techniques that I got from a resident, morning after the meeting, telling me they hated to leave me. Because there was a current council member out telling them that at the meeting the night before, they found their guy, that I was going away, I had no idea. This was negotiated behind my back, had no idea. When I resigned in April, I intended on resigning from, from everything, I was, I was burned out. Done this job way longer than I intended to, wasn't paid for it very well either, by the way. But my salary was, this year, if I had state city manager, my salary was hundred and three thousand, hundred and four thousand. And then my eighteen thousand of my fifteen hundred dollar a month vehicle allowance. And I did not become prepared to speak tonight. That was because I was chief and the, and the head or the emergency management coordinator, and my contract is written in that I have to have a vehicle that allows me to respond to emergency events, that means about ten thousand dollars worth of lighting and siree and equipment and things like that. That's why mine was so high, didn't get that the whole time I was city manager. But my salary was based fifty percent out of the police department and fifty percent out of the admin department. So I was making fifty-two thousand dollars a year as city manager, and fifty-two thousand a year as police chief. That's on the high end, there were six years before that, it wasn't that much. And I did that because the city took on a four and a half million dollars worth of bills, seven or eight years ago, eight years ago. And the notes a lot of money every, every year, it's, it's in excess of, it's a lot of money. And I knew that working both jobs would keep the city on its feet for a few years. And I did that for seven years, and I get paid back by negotiations behind my back to, uh, to have me go down the road. I am not interested in the city manager's job, not one bit. I do not have faith and confidence in it being treated fairly for hereout. My office is packed up, because I know what's coming. I hate this, I hate it. But it is what it is, and I'm gonna do the best job I can do till September thirtieth or whenever it comes. And I'll bid farewell and all the things, whatever that says, but, uh, just make no mistake about it, when I reapplied for the job, thought I could maybe help the city out again and give them five more years, because I was burned out, as I said. But that's, I didn't plan on talking, I kind of spoke off the cuff, but that's my heart.
He's influenced.
Awesome. Anything, any more discussion?
I also voted no.
He's got, he's.
I also voted no, Troy's done a great job for the city, I've only been here four or so years. Um, again, I, I don't have any issues with Troy, I'm scared to bring in somebody new that doesn't have the administrative responsibilities or, or background in the sense. I know Troy, when he came in, he had to learn a lot, and he did a very good job at it. Um, so again, that's why the.
So, no, 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 well, y'all, y'all was talking about not wanting to burn someone else. And y'all gonna do it same time.
I'm sorry, we, we do have certain, certain rules.
Only you got a lot of those.
Mr. Greason, anything?
No, uh, I kind of felt more that if we could get somebody in to, to work as a city manager, grants and so forth, that, uh, we would be able to relieve that off of Troy and still keep Troy. My intention was never to have anything other than Troy's police chief, and regardless of what this guy might think he's going to do, his job was to administrate, uh, for the, be administrator for the city. And do the things that, uh, uh, he needed to do as far as flood control and some of the other things to take the load off of Troy to begin with. Now, we've got several budget meetings coming up, and we've got to look at that real close. But we've, we've had an increase in for our budget and fire. And we've also had an increase for ambulance service and everything else, just like everybody had. So we have to look at that, uh, at some point in time, we can't keep burning Troy out. We can't keep passing it on to the mayor to try and do in his time. Well, this was an option to see if he could do, and we had some time to look at him to see if he was really gonna do anything. But right now, the way things are, and the way all of you feel about this man, there's no way that we can bring him in to the city.
You're right.
Can I ask a, a specific question to Troy? Troy, would you be willing to help us for a little time period, so we can actually find a better qualified city manager with the office experience? Or it's two separate roles, no overlapping, could you give us just a little bit of time?
I've always offered to help, uh, Felicia, I've offered to help on anything I can, I'm, I'm not mad at you, I'm disappointed, I'm not mad at anybody. I'll help make this city better the best way I can.
Pay him what he's worth. Yeah, pay him what he's worth.
I'm gonna say one more thing, that being said, I mean, I've, I've never been against keeping Troy. But my understanding is that the budget, they should not allow, they're either a part-time or full-time. But my understanding is that the city budget is not allow either a part-time or full-time police chief. And the city of Pennsylvania.
Change your ordinance.
So, change, change ordinance and it's about the money.
I understand that.
Okay, so the comment I heard from another council member here was, well, I don't mind higher taxes.
That was for me and I'll admit that because I said that in order to keep Troy in office. Because some particular council members were dead set and get, getting into office. So that's the only reason why I brought up higher taxes. And I'm sure, I'm, well, maybe Chuck, I'm sorry. I don't know how old you are, but I'm the only one up here who has to pay taxes. So every time you guys raise taxes, I'm just assuming, right? So every time you guys make taxes raised, it's, you know, I sit here and I think about the younger generations. So that's why I was okay with the higher taxes, keeping Troy.
I, I can say uh, just as a comment, uh, I was paying taxes long before you. We all look at the taxes. We don't like getting these taxes. It's, it's just something that, like I say, something that we have to look at and do the budget. But we want to keep the services like you expect them. We want to have trash picked up correctly. But we, the people, even uh, La Porte has trouble with their waste many. The city of, of Houston has real problems with waste management. Think ours are bad, still the stuff piled up in Houston.
Yeah, but we're smaller. We should have a little bit more under control.
Oh, I was ready.
Anything else, Wes?
I think so.
Duck, anything?
Sir, I'm good.
Don, anything else? Felicia, anything else?
I'm good.
Alright, the motion that we have and uh, the motion that we have is to cancel a contract and, and issue a new contract. Now, there, there could be amendments made if you would like to. I would like some finality to this tonight. There should, could, council members could amend it to where you put another person's name in there. If you're prepared to do that.
Cancel the contract.
And, you know, that would be completely up to council. So I'll give you that opportunity before we take a final vote, if you would like to do that. Thing I want to say is, is Troy has agreed to take it on for a period of time. And I don't, we're saying how long, or uh, three months?
I don't know.
Harrison, how long would you be willing to hold the city manager role until we found a better candidate, a better candidate? So if we start listing on Indeed, LinkedIn, you name all of the websites as of Monday morning. Give us a timeframe that you think that we could possibly, I don't want to say, you know, six months because to me that's too long. But would you be willing to give us three to four months?
I'm, I'm so sorry. I was confused. I didn't realize that, that's why I'm not interested in the city manager's role whatsoever at this point. I'd be happy to lend my services while I'm still employed in the city to helping find somebody else and doing anything I can. But I'm not one, I'm not interested in the city manager.
Okay. Will you stay as police chief?
Absolutely.
What could you write the outside of a better handle or a city manager and what kind of pay range would you pick of the acceptance?
I think that we need to define the role more of what the city manager is versus the old way of city manager. All of our accounting is outsourced with a CPA firm that, that does ninety-nine percent of that stuff. So to me, there was a candidate we interviewed in the first round that we overlooked, so to speak. Because she didn't have the police, or that candidate didn't have the police chief role.
You talking about this one, huh? No, I think they overlooked him because there was no supervisory experience.
But the girls should be able to run themselves up there if they know what they're supposed to do.
You, you had no experience of anything that David Stahl did, if you work with David Stahl to do uh, sewer repair or water repair. So she's not involved by.
I know, I can find a candidate like myself that can do that. I'm not volunteering myself, but I'm just saying, you know, there's candidates out there that have underground utility experience with office. We just need to broaden the pool of where we're pulling resumes rather than it be the T M L website. Cause I don't remember hearing anything about Indeed resumes, which we requested for a thirty-day trial.
And I understand we didn't get any.
Did we list it properly as a city manager and not a police chief? No.
I don't know about that. I didn't.
Yes.
Are you prepared to uh, take on that responsibility right now?
I am really willing to help the city and so.
You're appointing you to do that.
It's got to be unanimous vote, doesn't it?
The, the motion, uh, we're not going to put Troy in as a. Okay, here, here is the uh, item. Right now, we have a motion. Cancel the contract and issue a new.
No.
So what we're going to do is, at the council members' vote. So if you say aye, you're in favor of this. If you say nay, you're against it. So I'll call him out. My name is Ramos.
No.
Mr. Greason, no. Mr. Bell.
This is about the, our decision. I'm, I've been going back and forth on this every day.
This is about the motion on the, on the board. The motion is no, we're not going to hire him, period. Basically, it boils down to that.
Okay.
But that's not the motion, but yes, it boils down. Mr. Bell?
I will say no.
Mr. Hill?
I stick by what I said.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Alright, we have four noes and one aye. The motion fails. And before we leave this evening, I would like to clear up a couple of things. First off, a humorous one, the idea of me bullying former Marine and police chief is kind of humorous.
It happens.
I'm, I'm an old man and uh.
Witnessed it. Say it all you want.
Okay, I know we're the top of the ring.
It happens, yes.
The uh, the uh, the, the backroom deals, we, we had a couple of executive meetings to interview candidates and discuss candidates. Executive meetings, uh, by law cannot be discussed publicly or disclosed publicly what was, what was uh, happening back there.
But they were.
There were no backroom deals. Everything we did was in the open. And beyond that, um, I think I'll just let it be. Uh, all those for adjournments, say aye. Motion I have adjourned. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. And I need a second. And I have a motion from Mr. Greason, a second from Mr. Hill. And we are adjourned as, all those in favor, say aye. We are adjourned as of seven nineteen. Thank you guys for coming out.
Let's talk about this. I didn't want to have to talk to you out here. Y'all know what's fixed to happen.